We need to order. The reason is to work on the town plan tonight. There are a couple of agenda items that we do have. The first is to approve the agenda. And I'd like to ask that we amend it to add correspondence, just because there was one correspondence about a hearing with the Athens and Green Mountain Power that if we don't talk about tonight, by the time next meeting's gonna come by, the hearing will come and gone. So if we could add correspondence and approve the agenda with that one edit.
Okay, I know that we approved the agenda with that addition.
And the rest of the agenda, you notice, has more details than what I sent out for the formal agenda. Just on my notes, as I start talking about some stuff, you can't see where I'm going with it.
A second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All right, so we're gonna move forward with public comment. Public comment anywhere. Sir?
I was away for a couple of weeks. When I left, the plan had been... So you got through the energy part. I came back and I'm hearing new things like that the select board, or several members of the select board, or independent members of the select board made corrections, changes, amendments, edits to the plan and put industrial and commercial wind back. So I don't know what's real and what's not real, but I'm just wondering if that will be clarified in today's meeting.
If I could give you a summary and then everybody else can try and see how close I get to it. We'll see. All right. My perception, back in whenever the last meeting was June, we had a plan at a glance seem pretty good and we were ready to say, you know what, we're ready to approve this thing. I then took that down to the Wyndham Regional Commission and they went through it and they had a lot of mechanical changes, not editorial changes. They kept making it clear, our goal is not to change what you want to say, but some of your numbers don't match up, some of your titles don't match up. You didn't do some of the pieces required by law kinds of things and you'll hear us talk about that tonight. At the same time, a copy got put on the town website. Now exactly how that got on there, I'm not completely sure, but I was at the last select board meeting. As I understand it, it was told that everybody should go through that. There was some miscommunication. Three looked at it, two did not. And then Bill Kearns took those two, compiled them into one document and gave it to me, which I then sent to this board. So there's, if you gotta visualize, different versions of this product out there. So there's this one with these edits by three select board. They didn't get together and do it, nor did they do it as select board people. It's important to recognize this was not a select board document that they gave us officially. This group got it. It was discussed whether we should discuss it at this point and we decided, no, we will not. So even though it's out there, it's officially not part of this discussion because it's never come into this discussion. If that makes sense. We've all seen it, but we've not acted on it at all. The edits that we're making tonight and until we finish are primarily, and I have not looked at the select board going in depth, the Wyndham Regional ones and then anybody else's feelings they want to put in. Somebody wanna add to that? One of the waters or whatever, if that explained it somewhat?
That helps, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe just to add, in the select board meeting minutes of that particular meeting where it was discussed, there is a longish explanation by Bill Kearns, which he also delivered at the meeting, about what he considers the background, why it happened. And I guess the gist of that was that, the idea was to expedite the process. That he said that he had been talking to Eric and Chuck for months and hoping that the town plan would make faster progress and that, if I remember correctly, that was sort of what he was saying. The idea was that this would help expedite the process.
But am I correct that some of the edits included industrial and commercial wind being put back in?
That's correct.
It's not in our document, if I'll be clear. It is not in our document.
This is the one that the planning commission did, correct?
Correct, yeah. And it is in the document that was compiled by Bill Kearns, which we were told was a combination of three different people's comments who however say that they did not work on it together. But apparently somehow there was consensus about what that document should say and it was then forwarded to the planning commission. So the process raises questions about open meeting law and other issues.
So it's out there, but it's not part of our world at this point. It is important to say that our job is to approve a document. Once it's approved, it goes to that select board, which there are five of them, and then they have to officially adopt and they have every right to make any changes they want and bring it back to us. And then it gets promoted in hearings and lots of other stuff. But they're the ones that adopt it, not us. Questions?
That's much, much closer to helping.
Where did you approve minutes? That wasn't on the agenda.
I didn't put it in here and I'm open to discussion on that because I thought, oh, it's a special meeting and at the next meeting we approve two sets of minutes to our regular meeting. But it's all news to me and it's kind of, rather than force Chuck to every two weeks get all these edits together, we will need them for the next meeting, but this gives him some flex time to get some of that together.
That's a normal practice. Special meeting is focused on whatever we were doing before.
Those are not pointing that.
Well, yeah, and then, yeah, and then minutes can be laid later.
And yeah, you have it on the draft group for both sets.
So knowing I'm not gonna be here at the next meeting, do I make any corrections to Chuck?
Yes, and I'll process that and have it on present at the...
Okay.
All right, then I'll...
Other public comment? And that will move on to correspondence. The reason I put this in here is, and I'll ask Eric maybe you can give some insight from these. I don't know if you know what's going on. Green Mountain Power has applied to relocate approximately 7,500 feet of overhead utility lines down in Athens between Route 21 down to the Y in Brookline Road. And we are a statutory party because we're an adjacent municipality and therefore we're invited to attend the hearing, which is August 7th, Tuesday, August 7th, with an outside walk-around of the site and then a meeting in the town hall. So I mean, I don't see anything controversial and that we shouldn't be attending and I just wanted to make sure that we put it out there. Comments or thoughts on that?
And, I'm sorry, where is this line again?
It sounds like it's gonna be along the road from the bridge down to Cambridge Fort down to the Y in Athens from the upper and lower road go.
I think it's more like Holloway to the end of what we normally call the upper road, Route 35. Presently the line, when it hits the Y that you're just referring to, kind of bisects the two, turning lower and upper road and presents a maintenance nightmare for them because it's not adjacent to any road that goes right through the woods.
Oh, does, doesn't it?
So they're relocating the line up to being adjacent to Route 35.
For main entries?
Yeah, and this has to do mainly, as far as I can tell, with the type of clot treatment of the poles that are used and whether or not they're adjacent to people's water sources.
So we're just being notified as a statutory party because we are...
That's right.
A budding town.
Exactly. That's always...
None of it happens in Grafton. It don't happen in Athens.
I just wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of it because that date would've come down after the four minutes meeting.
Actually, I think some of it might be in Grafton between basically the intersection of Route 121 and 35, Cambridge Fort and the border with Athens. I think there's several residences there or the new pole line goes there.
Any reason for adding any of us to attend that you can think of?
Well, you've got the facts that I have, so I've...
I didn't see anything outrageous. Any other thoughts on it or I'll move on? We're gonna move into town plan. You notice I kind of put some things together and I sent you a variety of emails that you might've thought were hodgepodge and had no real rhyme or reason. And if you thought that, then you were probably right because kind of attack things as they came up and I looked at different things. The first thing I want to briefly discuss, and I've got copies if you need them. You've asked several times about the notes from John Bennett and I've got them here. Does everybody want a copy, essentially an electronic copy? I'll send them down. They don't add a lot to the conversation, but I did wanna make sure you all had a copy. There are two highlighted sections that he definitely saw as issues and I mentioned them in one of the other meetings, but you can see they're in there and we've gotta make sure they get addressed. So if you wanna take a minute and hopefully look it forward, look at it again.
Oh, thank you. This is better because I made a copy and I wasn't able to read it.
Yeah, I apologize.
This is better.
Do you have an extra for me? Thank you.
What is this?
The first page I cannot make eligible and I've gotta ask him about that. It sounds like something with the introduction and the organization of it.
Purpose of the town plan is...
I think that was that thing where we have goals, policies, and recommendations and he is looking for whatever he had there, his objectives, policies, and programs. And he decided that they think are aligned, I guess. So I'm not really concerned about that. They have a different terminology, if you mentioned that before. I got a week near the end, he just wrote down pages with no comments, so I don't know if you can get to them or, you know...
Yeah, I wasn't clear what he meant with that, but when he, did he mean that there's questions on those pages or...
Well, I can re-ask him about that. I can't remember now, it's been a month since we had the meeting and there's no comments. The energy I'm sure was, he turned over very, so he had no comments about that at all. He sat through that presentation. And I'll look at my notes, I don't remember having a lot on housing or economy, so...
And then the thing that's unclear is comment about implementation. Where is that comment by him where he... He did say something about, I don't see it, you know?
What should we start with?
Item 7, recommend a program for the implementation.
Yeah.
It's on page 3.
Item 7, yeah. Yeah, that was unclear. We talked about that a little bit last time when you brought up that John was asking about it and I'm still not clear if he means that there needs to be a separate section or is this just something that needs to be included in every section?
I got the sense that he wanted a separate summary section of an overview action plan, if you will. In summary, here's a big policy, big picture of things that you need to work on in the next five years.
So that needs to be clarified because that would be like a new element to the town plan, which is...
And that's what I envisioned him saying.
Yeah.
All right, I will re-ask him about that.
Right. That is not anything that we have previously had in the plan, so...
Right.
Or is that just...
First I heard about it was when he brought it up.
Yeah. Making, making recommendations to policies effective, goals, policies, recommendations for action. Okay, so that'll need to be clarified. Do you have a meeting coming up?
I have nothing planned for him. My thought is when I get a quantity mass between our discussions, it's worth getting hold of. I'll review, review, lead to the five, ten, quarter, ten, fifteen questions and then give you some feedback between meetings.
And I would be happy to participate in that meeting if that's helpful, kind of share the work.
And depending what they are, like hopefully they'll stick with emails and you don't have to travel all the way down there, but yes.
Sometimes it's better to...
Absolutely.
So I'd be happy to do that.
You guys have that in your notes, again, you can refer back to it. If you've got other questions, you can ask about it, but that's the notes that John gave me from that meeting I had three, four weeks ago now.
Yeah, and then, I mean, he's mentioning also in number eight, he's saying Grafton and its neighbor, but he's not really saying what is missing.
What he talks about is the research to verify that our maps align with their maps. If we've got Turner Hills, a resource area on the boundary of Athens, they'd better well have this resource area as well, so things combine together. Now if not, what are they gonna do? Fire us? I don't know.
Right, and can they do that work?
I got the sense that it is our expectation of us to reach out to the towns to find that out.
Like that's what they're getting paid to do.
I'm not sure what they get paid to do because I still learn that.
Now, this is an easy one with regard to Athens because Athens doesn't have a town plan. But there's other Jovi towns that do have it. Every other town, to my knowledge, that's Grafton has a town plan. Only Athens does not.
What I'll find interesting is when we see Chester's because the other towns are under the Wyndham Regional umbrella. Chester's in a different region. They have a whole different regional plan that they follow, so I don't know how...
The maps you sent out most recently from Wyndham Regional were the whole Wyndham region, so it would be everyone but Chester already. Probably that we have.
Other questions on John's document?
And again, when he did not check off an element, does that mean there's something missing there?
I'll ask him about that. I'm gonna move on to letter D, if you're ready. I printed out a document. If anyone wants to pass it down, I appreciate it. I don't expect to complete this, but this is more of a survey, so we all have a common set of knowledge. There was multiple, six times I found in the town plan that we have right now referring to appendixes and as of now, we have no appendixes that we approved. So the appendixes you see here are the appendixes from the previous town plan, which I assume the references were referring to. As you can see, I put together a list of three things I think we need to do is verify which appendixes we want, determine whether the information within those appendixes are accurate enough to date. Some of them are 2007, for example. And then make sure if we do reference, have a reference in the document to an appendix, that it is the right one we're talking about. And I gotta put that six listed. With that, I guess my thought is to take a look at this and I kind of turned to Ken and Smutter because it might know... I mean, I guess I kind of lean towards looking at each one of these tables briefly and if they're fine, great. If they need to be updated, let's make notes and get some work done.
I did work on this today and definitely like the appendix one, the tables for the grand list. That's June 30th of 2007. So apparently A and B on the next page, they took 2013 abstract and 2007. I could update those. And that's easier now because that's a printout we have to file behind our grand list.
So that's just a cut and paste and you can stick into...
Yeah.
How do we make sure we do that? Do you wanna do that right in Dropbox, email to Chuck? Any idea?
Yeah, I can do that.
So what year do you have starting?
On page two and three, that's your abstract grand list.
Correct, so what's the most updated one?
Oh, it would be just launched by grand list June. So it depends, do you wanna do 2017?
Yes.
Okay, and do you wanna include 18 in 2017 or do you want 18 in there?
What are your thoughts? If you've got more, most up to date, you'd be the best.
Yeah, we just launched it in June, so... Yeah, so do you want June of 18 and what is the other one? It looks like they put two. I'm not sure why they have '07 in. Well, because 13 is when it was re-adopted, the town plan. So that's why 13's in there, 7's in there because that was the first original town plan. So do you want 13 over to where 7 is and then put 18 where 13 is?
Yeah, I think so. We can drop 2007 at this point.
Right, and move 13 over. The listers will help me with a lot of this if you wanted me to. Now, table two on page three, that's according to the 2010 census and one has not been done since.
Right.
Just leave that one? If everybody so chooses to have that in?
There are estimates that the Wyndham Regional had. Do you wanna go towards that or just go with the official accurate counties?
We could do both. The census being the last official, you know, we could have a more recent estimate to get an idea of what the trend might be.
I think that's one of the numbers that carried. I'll throw for that. Say that again?
The figures from Wyndham Regional, the updated census, the residential property categories, Dave said that Wyndham Regional has those figures also.
I'm not sure if they have those specific ones. They have a lot of interpolated numbers that they have on their website for Grafton. And again, their estimates is all they are, but they are available.
It would be useful to include those to be as up to date as possible, even if they're only estimates.
Something like that, could we use a website link or some kind of data link so that as it gets updated, we know where to go?
Then you wouldn't know what numbers you were facing with current town plan, that's the only problem with that. You could put in though, for updated versions, you know, then click on this. That feels reasonable, but I don't think it could be part of the town plan, so...
Oh, that makes sense.
I apologize for the graphs. I'm a visual learner, so I turn some of these into graphs just because that's what I see things a bit better there.
On page four, too, the tax rate and taxes generated for a paper four. You can also do that. How far back do you wanna go? Do you wanna keep three, four onward or do you wanna drop off, just keep from 7 to current? 2007 to current? I mean, we can't keep adding and adding, we're holding this huge long chart.
I don't have any preference, I don't know what others think.
Think we should at least get the last town plan.
To what year do you wanna go back to?
2013.
We're talking about table four?
Table four, yeah. How far back do you wanna go? I can update.
How far forward can you go, beginning with 2018 or 17 here?
Yeah, I can do 18, 19 that we're in, but I'd rather do 17, 18 and then, I don't know, do you want 18, 19 that we're in right now?
What's the most accurate current?
That would be 18, 19 that we're in now, we could do that.
You mean it's accurate and then go back 10 years?
All right, so if you go forward to 18, but do you wanna drop any out?
Just keep it 10 years.
Go 10 years?
Okay, so you wanna go 07, 08?
This was 03 to 13.
They did that because the last time it was redone, this was when it was re-adopted and amended.
So you're putting now, please go back to 08 or 09, which is 10 years worth.
Matt suggests 10 years for that? Any thoughts, concerns?
It sounds reasonable.
All right, let's move on to the next one. Table five, parcel areas?
That would be the same thing. I can work with the listers on that and I'll... I'll do 13 and 18 and drop 7 because 7 was when... 13 was the last amendment for the town plan.
So we'll do 10 years there again?
Well, that'll only be five years. We're just going from the last amended town plan to now. Because they had gone from 7 when they first adopted it, then to the amendment on 13 and now we'll do the amended to the new one. Grafton population, that again came from the census, so can't change that.
Okay.
Population change, I'm assuming that's from census, but it doesn't...
Judging by the years, it looks like census data.
Yeah, that looks like census data also.
2009, 2000, 2010.
Same thing, can't mess with that for 2020.
Same thing with table eight, if you're studying all that.
Table nine, same thing then?
Housing.
Yeah. Just include it in the dates.
Yeah, that's census also.
It's nice to have the graphs because it shows the trends, such as the aging of the population. Not that we did not know that anyway, but... Dropping of the other people.
School enrollment, I can work with WAND issue on that with Christine at Supervisory Union since I work for the mainways and the school. And again, you wanna go from 7 forward and drop previous years?
10 years?
So we'll do 10 years again.
See a lot of head nodding? That's the tables. Are there any tables that we should include that are not in there? Do we include all of these? They're not all referenced in the document, by the way. I don't have a problem with all of them, I just look for feedback.
I find them interesting and definitely we want to leave them on.
Yeah, we provide some good information on the town that's not presented elsewhere in the plan.
As we finish up the rest of the plan, if there's other tables and data we wanna throw in, do we throw into this appendix one? Is another table, just keeping all the tables in the appendix one? Makes sense? Uh, appendix two, that's what we have for elected town officials. I don't have two good civics, so I don't know if that's accurate or am I missing anyone or is that...
Um, you know, the elected town officials, I think, are fine. They're all the same, I checked them out today. There's a down to the appointed by select board. The planning commission has the number five, should be number seven.
Oh, yeah.
And the officials appointed by the state, we no longer have a town service officer, but we still have the number thirty.
And also the town administrative assistant has been changed to town administrator.
We also have an appointed emergency management director.
By state or by...
Town.
Kim, is the pound keeper still correct or is it not called animal control?
It's not really, um, I don't know what you mean. It's pound keeper is kind of what it's categorized at the statute. We just use the Wyndham County Humane Society.
We went over these at some point and I have in my notes that titled animal control, but I don't know if that's the official title now or not.
No, not... I'll look and see what they're calling it. No, that's, um, I'll look and see what the contract is that we just signed with Wyndham Regional, um, Wyndham Humane Society. They just did it two meetings ago. And that's the, so I can check what they tend to call theirs.
And then, um, do we still have a representative to the New Hampshire Vermont Solid Waste Project?
Yeah.
And that's Cynthia and myself. Or, well, it's, because we also have the Wyndham Solid Waste District. Is that the same thing?
Well, it's, it's representative to solid waste. And it's not New Hampshire anymore, it's just Vermont Solid Waste.
So it's just Vermont, yeah. But it's different from the Wyndham Solid Waste District.
It must, yeah, because that's where I am, it's just a wind up, yeah, it's just.
So there's two?
I didn't know we had a Wyndham.
I don't believe we have anything to do with one.
I don't think we have.
Again, that's a note from a previous meeting that I had written down, but maybe.
We have the representative, I mean Cynthia and I are just on the solid waste.
Well, so maybe we could just ignore that. That's not. And then also in my notes from previous meeting, um, crossed out septic officer because we have a health officer. Do we have separates? We, we don't have septic officer.
We don't have a septic officer, but he, we don't appoint one because it falls under the health officers.
So should we just take that off the list?
I would just take it off entirely.
So Chuck, are you taking notes now or is it going to fix it later?
Yeah, I'm trying to keep them up right now.
If not, I've highlighted it in all.
Thank you.
Today, so.
All right, just let me grab your notes and have yours.
I have the really inspector of Bloomberg, I don't ever remember seeing that one. Yeah. Um, that is, um, appreciated.
So the changes to appendix two that I heard was change town administrative assistant to town administrator?
Yeah.
Was to look into pound keeper to see if that's changed? To change graph and planning commission from five to seven? To scratch off septic officer? To add emergency management director under appointed by select board? And then under appointed by state, delete town service officer?
Plus the representative to Vermont Solid Waste Project, delete New Hampshire. I think that's what you said, Kim.
Representative to solid waste, Vermont solid waste, is how it really.
To get rid of the answer on that one?
Yeah.
Which is just Vermont solid waste?
Yeah.
And what's the description of the flood board? That I don't see on here?
Yeah, I was just looking at the zoning board adjustment, we don't have, we don't have zoning board.
It was the flood zone.
So can we just make that accurate for now?
Yeah, flood zoning board.
So zoning board of adjustment with five is the flood zoning board?
Yes.
Do we have five on that or three?
I wanted to say three.
I want to say three.
Eric?
I think there's presently four.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's one and three and there's only the number.
So it should be five, so leave it aside?
Wait a minute, bud. Do we have a timeline for, um, breaking off the separate Z B A zoning boards just?
You attended the meeting, Sam was there, Eric was there, it's up to the select board.
Yeah, it's not our call at all, but it's something they want to go through with it and I don't want to process on that.
No, I've never.
Did you say removing town service officer?
Mm-hmm.
Stay from that. Why is that removed?
Because they no longer require it.
The only thing, to me, it was done before I was here, so I describe it as a sacred calendar, I'm not going to touch, is Skip's document, I did not include it. That is a very long document. You have about eighty to ninety page documents and that adds another fifteen pages or so to the town plan. It is appendix four and it is mentioned at least once in the document. And you guys all have access to it and unless somebody says otherwise, it's designed in there.
Well, it deals exclusively with natural resources and we have a specific chapter for natural resources and a lot of that information is incorporated in there.
Thank you.
No, that, that was an extensive piece of work and there was an extensive discussion about it at the time. And it was definitely decided that because it is a valuable document with so much information, basically the whole natural resources history of the area, that it should be included as an appendix. It's basically like a gift to the town and posterity, the work that he put into it. And now that the town plan is going to be a digital document, we're not going to be printing hundreds of copies. The fact that it adds a few pages doesn't, that doesn't matter. Nobody's going to have to pay for extra pages.
So right now my plan is to include that as an, as appendix four.
That was, that was, and we discussed and decided a long time ago.
A potential appendix five that I've been playing is a glossary, just so you know.
But we also had appendix three.
Right, we've got one more to do.
Oh, 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 you're back.
My brain is making sure. Is there anything else on appendix two after those changes? Uh, appendix three, you got ordinances and bylaws through 2007?
Um, that's something, um, that I worked on too and I need copies of the table of contents that Phil's been working on adding ordinances and he's, um, got a table of contents by date. So actually there's quite a few since the last one was 2007. We've got sexual harassment, we've got a policy of health and safety, um, smoking tobacco personnel, rules for seniors.
It's policies, not ordinances.
They are all, they're ord, well, that's, it's ordinances by laws and they've got policies in here too and ordinances. So we, and he's got ordinance also that are new also. So it depends, do you want to do ordinances, do you just want to do ordinances and policies? I think it's really helpful to have this in case they want to go to our website and look up any of the policies or so that someone knows that we do have these policies.
I think separating them out though might make more sense. One is like actual ordinances, the other one is policies.
Yeah, and see like they've got a domestic animal nuisance ordinance. Um, they got regulations, so it's kind of mixed up in there, but it's by date wise. I think the one did chronologically rather than by ordinance, by policy.
So the one key difference that I could see from listening to you is that these ordinances and bylaws are applying to the whole town and its population, but those policies apply to town employees.
No.
Municipal, uh, they, well, they would apply, at least some of them apply to people who work for the municipality.
Or volunteers, like the, uh, when we just did the anti.
Well, we got a basic emergency operation plan that was in 2012. Pre-disaster hazard mitigation in eight. Um, private road signage in 2011, so these are all, that would involve the whole town.
The sexual harassment.
Those are employee policies. Those few are employee policies. Then you have internal policies. And then you've got emergency. And then you've got highway and there's like, uh, private road signage standards. Safety hiring policy, mailbox policy. Class three minimum standards, class four policy, trails and highways, so.
I don't know, uh, I mean, none of those. Some of those don't sound like they need to be in the town plan or maybe some of them do.
Town hall usage? I mean, if somebody wants to use a town hall?
I think it'd be interesting to list what exists and say.
It shows we're in compliance with the law by having policies and ordinances. I think it, it, it just.
Can anybody define the difference between a policy and ordinance and a bylaw?
An ordinance is much, much stronger than a policy. A policy is what you as a town adopt and you're not going by your state statute. So you can tweak, a state statute is the law, but then you can also take a policy and say, well, my office policy for making a copy or my office policy for doing research is this.
An ordinance?
An ordinance is a, is a ruling for the town, like a junkyard ordinance, that has to be like a public hearing and that's got a 30 day notice and that's, and you can actually police an ordinance, you can't police a policy.
How about a bylaw?
I think that's just a governing of, of, of your committee or.
Is there, is a book of bylaws and a book of ordinances somewhere or two separate books?
No, we've got them all. Actually, I don't even have any bylaws listed here, I didn't see bylaws.
But they do have at least one policy, 2002 class four road use policy.
Yeah. Right, and that's why I'm saying there's a whole lot more policies than what's there.
Could you send that out almost electronically so we have a chance to look it over and we'll put it on the next agenda? Because I think we're going to have to revisit these multiple times. My goal tonight was to have us all have the same overview of what's in here. If you could send that and we can maybe discuss that later then.
Okay, yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah, and then, sorry David, then, and then what you just asked, then I think we should have the definitions there.
Okay.
They, you know.
I've got a document started, very kind of word coming across, I'll share that.
Yeah, what is a, what is a policy versus what is an ordinance?
That's kind of thing. Policy would be a guide. And an ordinance is an order. It's more lawful.
Exactly, there's a.
An ordinance should have, it's important, something special behind it, like.
A fine. Yeah, that's kind of, that's what it is. And a policy is how you want to.
It's a, it's a rule.
A routine, yeah.
More of a aspirational goal, when we repeat at the door, it's a policy.
I'm going to get charged so much for retardation. Okay, so I'll send this out to everybody that, what Bill has in the table of contents and then you can pick and choose it.
All right, I had three goals, determine what appendixes we want. We've done a little bit of that and it sounds like we've got potentially five, with this fifth one being the glossary. Determine whether the information is updated. Kim, you're going to take the lead on that and get some of that stuff updated, the, uh, the data and some of the.
Yeah, the data, yeah.
Okay. Um, and then you can see I've got, I think we're going to visit them through our discussions. Appendix is our, are identified in six, I just did a quick search in Microsoft Word and the word appendix came up six times, five times plus that page 15 thing, which I'd like to change to see appendix four kind of thing rather than that sentence that goes out there. And we don't have to deal with that now, but at some point, it's an editorial thing. We need to make sure they align, all right? Anything else with appendixes now? We're going to have, it looks like five of them and we'll develop them with all the other documents that would go on.
Well, we have the ability in the glossary to link from text straight to the gloss, glossary.
In what way, you mean doing a hyperlink maybe or?
Yes.
We could if you wanted to, do an indexer or a hyperlink, I don't know.
That's doable, that'd make it more user friendly to people who aren't as familiar with the document and who are.
Number, letter C is maps. And kind of like appendixes, I put it in there not that we're going to do maps, be done with them, but we've got a lot of maps from all over the place. And as we do land use and natural resources, probably flood resiliency and others, it refers to things that don't exist in any of our maps. So I sent you an electronic copy of this, all this document is, is a table of contents of the maps, there are fourteen I believe, that we've got. I did not make copies of those maps. And the bottom that, if anybody wants one, our blank copies, now you bring colored pencils, I haven't thought about it. To figure out what maps we're going to have and what we're going to do with them all.
Yeah, that's what we just.
Oh, yes, you're probably getting right there. We'll fix that. It's flood hazard, not floor hazard. Probably makes sense. For now, use that as a reference because you've got a bunch of other stuff there. I'm bouncing around something wicked right now, I apologize, but it's kind of the order papers are in. Matt, you were at the Habitat, the, the wildlife block and Habitat connector thing with me. I remember you went to that, right? That, that big one went down to the town.
Yeah, I went to that one too.
Did you go to that one?
Yeah.
Do you remember them talking about landscape connectors versus local connectors?
I don't.
Nor do I. And so this map, it's, so you all had the same information, came from this bio finder that they use. And when I read Act 171, what was that? It talked a lot about the difference between landscape connectors and local connectors. And then when I looked at all their data, all their data is all about these landscape connectors. A local connector is when you got two fields and a rock wall and they got to travel back and forth. That's the one we kept hearing about. Landscape connectors, and that's what this map is showing, are connectors where you've got bears that hang out over here in a hundred square miles and then they need to for breeding and for habitat and everything else, occasionally migrate to other large sections of areas. And these are called landscape connectors. And if you look at this map, these, these connectivity blocks on the second one are these landscape connectivity blocks, not these little arrows jumping across the road or running through a field kind of thing. If you zoom out on these, that there's big maps in New Hampshire and southern Vermont and so forth that shows how this kind of all plays together. I don't know what to do with this, but we were told that because of Act 171, we've got to have maps showing these, um, high, these forest blocks and these habitat connectors. This is what I found. I'm not saying approve it, I'm saying here's some information I found. And if you go to the website that I've got listed up there, you've got twenty or thirty layers that you can turn on and off and look at lots of different things. I turned these on for this one discussion. Anybody want to say anything on that or I'm going to kind of move on for now? And at some point, probably in the land, we've got to talk about that.
How do we look at these in the past? Am I misremembering this?
This one was created from scratch just this week, so.
But I looked at them online at some point in preparation for something.
No, I did it too. So that's what you looked at. So the same idea though, that you just went to bio finder, we did. So I printed it out for you all and that's what you saw.
Okay. But we just didn't include that information in our current version?
I thought we did.
That's what I'm confused.
We were speaking about me and.
Yeah, we just talked about, but we never talked about producing a map yet.
Not a map, but not.
But you're familiar with the data, because that was, goes to Eric's point where it's like all high resource area.
Yeah, I think we all agreed to it in principle, so if all it is is saying, yes, let's include these maps. I guess the other question is, do you want the maps in individual chapters or is a separate set of, of, an appendix?
We have a chapter called maps. It's almost like a appendix of maps, I don't know.
Well, where the discussion takes place about the, the, um, forest blocks and habitat connectors, that's in the, uh, natural resources, um, chapter.
Do you want to just use the URL from that at the time?
And that's not to say that we can't have a printed map, but I think we just cited the, where this data was located.
It'd be nice to have both, I guess.
Yeah, agreed, and we can update that.
Yeah, so that's, that's where these maps would belong, because we have the language about the importance of detecting forest blocks and habitat connectors.
Wasn't that the night I was picking it up on my phone and emailing it to you?
Yeah. That's why, that's how I found it out or I forget the order of events, but yeah.
I'm going to pass more paper off because I kill trees.
It's supposed to protect forest blocks.
Yeah, I know, these are Brazilian trees. You got that on camera? I apologize, because I'm still nowhere near where I need to be, but I continue to read, continue to learn. For those that have not browsed this wonderful little document, this is the Wyndham Regional Plan, which ours somehow needs to align to in some circumstances. In reading this, it answered a lot of questions of things that I did not understand before. And so, I went through and pulled out this series of pages for discussion's sake and to make sure that when we generate our maps, we really have what we want to have. And so, if you take a minute, I'm just gonna fly through these one page at a time, so you know what you're looking at and why I included them, at least I'll give you a rationale of why I stuck them in there. And then, I think as we start the land chapter, this will be the foundation for us to have a discussion about things like what is a resource, what is a rural productive, et cetera, et cetera. The first map just, I threw in there because clearly state shows the point, we are a forested town. I just wanted, that's who we are, we are a forested town, and you can see it there with very little yellow, very little red. So, that's the only reason I put it in there. Second one is to make sure we're all clear on what those conservative lands are, the state land, the town land, et cetera. That's their opinion, and if we have any problem with it, we ought to talk to them about that. The third map is called Proposed Land Use, and I apologize, because I've been asking and confused, and I got finally answered. I do not understand where our terminology came from when we keep talking about resource land, productive rural, et cetera. Obviously, it's their terminology. Now, you see their map right there, and they've got resource land and productive rural there. Then you look at our map and it looks like their map? And then when I met with John Bennett, he kinda made fun of this, like, what kind of map is that? That's not a good map, you guys gotta work on your map, that's... Now I can say, John, we got it from you, it was your map. So, that's that piece, and we can zoom in on that. At some point, if we had the money, we can talk to them about producing a map, just a graph, and show them that in more detail. The next one is just basins and water sheds, because we keep talking about our water situation. You can see where the town lines aren't there, but we are up in upper Saxon River and a little bit of us, my house included, is Lower Williams River. Next one is water resources, again, just showing us where they are. We, the next one, self-explanatory ecological resources, bear habitat, et cetera. To me, it's kind of an important thing to know that we're, got a lot going on. Several documents talk about steep slopes. So, I threw a document in that says these are our steep slopes, there they are, and that's what they see as greater than 25%, et cetera. You got the farmland soil on the next page. Sand and gravel, because again, even have productive rural in there. There are three historic developments on the final map, Hopentown, Grafton, and Mechanicsville. And the biggest thing for me was the text that followed. This is much more involved in our text, and it helped describe to me some of the things that I guess I did not understand. And we gotta look at our map, and is our map what we wanted to say based on this piece of information?
So, what were you hoping we were gonna do with these tonight?
Well, I'm not sure right now, I'm gonna make sure we're all on the same page. If the town plan is a helicopter view of the town, then these pictures are a satellite view of our region, I guess. And ours needs to align with towns and so forth. We keep talking about, you know, somebody, not in this committee but in town, said, you know, Dave, what we gotta do is make all of Grafton one big resource. Well, I don't think we can do that based on these definitions. At the same time, the rural residential on our map seems a lot more than what we want. What I envision our town as being primarily is productive rural, and we just have to come to consensus or a vote. And I, honestly, this is not a big deal to me, I guess as long as we have a map that we can say aligns with what they want. John's big thing, I remember he had, we had rural residential in areas with no roads. And the definition is easily accessible with existing roads, and we had massive swaths of high mountains and ridge lines and et cetera identified as rural residential. And I've gotta get those maps out, because they're buried in here somewhere, our maps themselves.
Could that have been just a necessary thing?
Couldn't be right, if you've got to make sure it's right.
Chuck, do you know what he's talking about?
No, I don't.
I gotta dig out my maps that are buried in here.
So, I think...
They were talking about the proposed or future map. Not the existing one, but the, what do you call it, the proposed or, maps are buried in here.
So, I'm looking at the old town plan.
Yep.
Is basically, everything that's white is the rural residential.
And that's where he was talking about, so you know...
And John's right, I mean, this is all, this is all forest, this is all forest.
That's what he was talking about, so...
Can't be residential.
So, are those easy fixes and we move on, or is it a big deal, and how do we move forward? That's sort of the check mark.
Yeah, yeah. So, I guess the question to WRC is, how much assistance can we give us in reducing, correcting, and updating maps? What's the production system for maps?
I got kind of two answers from John when he asked about that. He said, you know, you guys are nice, and I'm sure we knew that at no charge. You guys got that on tape, that's what he said. But then, earlier in the conversation, he says, a normal set of maps, a town normally figures about $600 or so, you get all of the maps they need for a town plan, in terms of cost. Time-wise, we didn't talk how long it would take to generate those maps.
So, that, I guess, needs to be clarified.
Mm-hmm. What we may have to do is use some maps on our own neatly and as best we can, and then in next year's budget, ask the select board if one can get some more professional maps and stick them in as an edit to the document.
Yeah, I mean...
So Valerie, I wanted to answer the discussion about maps. We went back to April 16. We did go over a lot of Act 71, it doesn't look like maps, even though they were discussed. We never got to make in that final decision to put it in and so forth, but needed to double-check that. So, that'll be, we're gonna cover that now, that's good, but we got close to talking about putting it in, but we should never...
It's one of those little things we gotta get done, that's all. And I don't know that now is the right time, or part of the natural resources chapter, is when you do that. I'm not sure what it's supposed to look like, you know, is it a separate map? Is that what you envisioned for the habitat blocks or the wildlife blocks and habitat connectors, or what do you think on that?
I think that's, that's a WRC question, because this Act 171 requirement is all new. And, and you know, and we've been saying all along, we need some guidance from them. How do, how do we implement the requirements of Act 171? We don't know yet how to do it, so they need to help us.
All right, I can ask John about that, though, we use bio finder, do a snapshot over graph?
And that's how we produced it in the past. It could be that we just cite bio finder, or it could be that we create a print map, and or a file says, do both.
At least start with that, and you have something to look at.
They probably have a template shell that they're already doing to other towns.
That's what I'm thinking, that there's gotta be some...
And that makes it cheaper for us, because they just move it over. They map extent to where our town is, they start changing some of the data, but it still, you know, it says town Grafton instead, it's cheaper that way. But the symbology, the legend, all the cartography, that stays intact and just sort of showing us now.
And bio finder has all the info, but it's kind of hard to figure out how to use it.
That's right.
It's cool, $11 bill.
And it's layers on layers that you can go into if you know how, I haven't yet found the magic key.
You were interested in working with me in April, and I was sick as a dog, and you said, huh, I'm glad I figured it out. This is gonna take a while for us to figure it out together.
Well, what you've gotten from me so far is a lot of loose end stuff that needs to be dealt with. And, you know, the maps and the appendix, because they're integral to the text, can't be dealt with until we're sure the text is right. But now you see what we've got, and how we want them to look is a decision that we as a group need to make. So, I wanna get us all up to speed on that question so far.
Can I make a global comment? We've had revisions made in the past, they've been adapted just using Illustrator. We just went ahead and made changes, but they're all factual, there's not, if there's any policy or anything like that. So, the changes that you see on Dropbox are just, you know, this road is wrong name, or add section here. If there's any exception to that, I haven't seen it.
And I think we probably need to look at that as a solution as we present our proposal to the select board, with the hope that the next fiscal year, we got some money to make them a little bit more professional.
Yeah, yeah.
And go that way. Questions?
Comments?
Coming back to what you said about our maps being the Wyndham Regional's maps. There is a very substantial difference between what we have been talking about and what they have in their maps. And that is the sort of dark green area here that they have designated as resource lands. And for the most part, we have talked about turning most of those into productive rural ones. And with exceptions with places where there are things like the Turner Wildlife Reserve, state forests, endangered species, and that sort of thing. If you read their definition, which, the definition of resource lands is what we were adopting in our plan to stay consistent with their terminology. Resource lands are very restrictive. And I don't believe that much of what they've colored in in green should have that degree of restriction placed upon them.
Resource land requires special protection or consideration due to their uniqueness, irreplaceable, or fragile nature or important ecological function. Any development or land use in these areas should be designed to have minimal impact on natural resources and should include effective mitigation measures that will protect natural resource values. Well, at some point, we're gonna have to either come to consensus or have a vote and do a map. I don't know if now, tonight's the right time, because we have, again, I think if we look at the land chapter, that will help guide us in what we want. But yeah, I agree, there's a lot of resource land, or I'm not saying it shouldn't be or should be. They have a lot more than I think what we were thinking of.
Do you want people to move into...
Well, I think that's gonna require, require a conversation and work.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And I'm bouncing around a little bit, we talked about that neighbors' chapter. That's what we wanna consider, they've got as well for their land, excluding Athens, I guess. Again, my goal with both appendixes and maps was not so much like a chapter, approve it, move on, but now there is a body of knowledge we all have, share, and move forward. We have 14 maps right now, do we need 14? What are the maps we should have, and are they accurate and correct? And do they align with our terminology? If this don't, they don't, just because they don't... Our maps we've got do not use productive rural, et cetera, et cetera, they've got... What do they got, they got something else in there?
Our old ones have conservation areas.
There is conservation areas.
But we've had some markups of those maps done whilst we've been working on this town plan, so...
And this goes a little bit to questions like what you asked. We gotta be careful, I've seen markups, but I don't know that any of them have gone through the board approval, that yes, those are we gonna have.
True.
Some of them have been discussed, but it's been so long, it would be better if we just went over it very quickly again.
Absolutely, at some point, really make sure we're clear that these are the maps we want, and we all agree that they're... All right, not none, but...
Yes, and which other 14, there's other 14 maps on your...
That's an outline, starting with floor hazard.
Yeah.
So, here's my concern with this process, is they're gonna keep updating, and we're gonna keep trying to keep up with them updating, and whatever are gonna be done?
Who's they?
The Wyndham Regional Commission. Like, I feel like these are, they're the most current ones that currently exist, at some point, we just have to say...
Those are 2014, they haven't changed since then.
Yeah.
I'm gonna plan on changing, the only thing they've changed since then is the energy chapter and the housing chapter, I think I read, is that accurate? Everything else is pretty locked in, so... I'm showing as reference. Legally, we don't have, we can say, you know what, they're stupid, throw them away, we're gonna do our own from scratch.
I don't have any objection to any of them, that's not my point, I was just wondering at what point are we just gonna say, okay, we're gonna adopt theirs?
I don't know if we're ever gonna do that.
Don't we have to be compliant with theirs, I guess?
Well, I mean, we'll always be in compliance if we are using what they have now. They will keep changing, and they have actually said as much, they will be updating their maps. But that doesn't mean that we are out of compliance, because that, you know, we have compliance with what's there now. They will be updating, so I don't worry about that. I mean, we just decide for now, when we're trying to complete our town plan, we use what's there now.
And I wanna, I see this as weird dog, not the tail.
Yeah.
If we do decide that every square inch of Grafton Town is resource land, then that's what we decide, even if they said no. If we decide nothing is resource land, we're gonna pretty do a big hydene plant, then we might fight back a little bit, but again, weird dog, this is just references of their perspective on some stuff.
Yeah.
All right? Bad and funny?
So, so Dave, how did you come up with this list of 14 maps? Some of them are the existing old maps?
Those are the maps that I got off of Dropbox. There's a file called maps in Dropbox, I downloaded that, and I went through them one at a time and wrote down what I saw for each map legend, for each map, the data source, where they got the information.
And that's the edit, so we compiled the data.
Okay.
Questions or comments? Take a breath.
Well, thank you for putting this all together.
This guy had to wrap, he had to wrap, he had no other way of doing it, so...
And the maps called Community Facilities?
It's in the remaster, I guess.
It's just the parks.
I don't remember seeing it, but I probably have seen it at some point. Where would that be?
Look in the 2008 plan, in the map section.
Yeah, it's all the town forests. Which we have to add some.
Oh, okay. I see. I think we have a couple more. Parks.
So Chuck, this was one of my concerns. We're looking at community facilities and somebody at some point put a red box and said, add Grafton Pond Pool. Do you know who did that? When? There's a series of those kinds of notes.
I think you did it before you joined the.
You did? Okay. All right. So those are things that were approved by this body and those are good stuff.
Yes, I remember that too.
It was like factual stuff.
Is Winnie Park on there too? I think we have them, Winnie Park.
Yeah. Obviously, it's been so long that you kind of forget what was done.
I just want to verify, these aren't, you know, one of us downloading and making edits and uploading without getting approval from everybody. They are official maps for us right now.
And I made a few changes recently. I think somebody pointed out to me that we'd forgot that the highway garage is here now. You know, this is simple stuff, so I just added it.
Oh, yes. Community facilities.
That's right.
Down road. Highway garage.
You know, a good example, and again, how we want to approach this, because of you guys. You know, I'm looking at Resource Areas Land, which is the first map here. And if you look at it, to me, it's almost the exact opposite of what resource area is. It has, you know, all the land along the roads is resource areas and our definition is no, that that land way up high in the mountains away from the roads. So, again, this needs to be cleaned up. I don't have a good plan on how to do it. I want to make sure you're aware of it at this point. And maybe, maybe not. One way to clean it up. It seemed to work well at the last meeting, correct me if I'm wrong. When we looked at Marion's edits as a group and just approved page by page. I sent you documentation of some edits of the land use chapter. What I've got here are two documents. One showing the pink edits. The other, the document as a finished document with the edits. And if you've got the town plan that we've been using, that's the original. So three different documents, if you will. The town plan we've been using has the original. This one with no pink is what it looks like after I've made some suggested changes. Nobody's voted on any of these. And this one in pink shows the actual changes I did make to the original. If that makes sense? Take one each one of those. This is land use because we're talking about maps and we gotta have maps match both this and the resource chapter.
Chuck, can you put them up so that the others know?
No. You remember setting a change that goes with the map in here? It's reconfigured. Remember, we had this problem about a year ago? Plug in, it just doesn't.
Oh, so you can't project anymore?
Yeah, it says it's locked out. So I gotta go find Bill and throw it on.
So I was kind of along those lines, and it may be slightly off topic, but just wondering, could we just ask him as the town administrator or whatever his position is these days to give you and the vice chair and the clerk the key? And to make sure that the clerk has access to whatever technology needs to happen here?
I can talk to Bill about that and both those things. I already got the key. I'm an agenda doctor. I'll talk to him how we make sure this technology works. Because we also have to get you access to the website and the town did say clearly instructed Bill to make sure you had access to that website.
Dave, do you want to see me on Friday, do a key?
I can do that.
He's also signing out the key for it.
Chuck, that's your personal laptop?
Thank you.
Chuck, that's your personal laptop there?
Yeah.
And it doesn't talk to the projector?
Well, nine times in ten, it does. I think there's somebody that will come in and change the settings and then it doesn't.
If I get a key, I can play with this because I use this a whole time. I'll figure out how it works.
I believe it's the USB versus this, you know.
All right. We'll get that straightened out as well. I guess I'll throw three options out to you. Option number one, someone make a motion that says, we don't accept any of these. We're done and we can vote that way. Somebody can vote, hey, I make a motion, we accept all of Dave's changes. We go that way or we go one line at a time for this whole thing. It's up to you how you want to approach this.
I would suggest that we go one by one and it might go very quickly. The same as what we did with Marion's.
I was really surprised how fast that went when we started working.
Yeah. I went through this earlier and I just had like a couple of maybe small questions. So, um, does that sound reasonable to everybody?
Yeah, I guess I've made some comments too, yeah.
So I guess, oh God, they're not page numbered. Oh, I apologize for that. Starting with what I will call page one. And I haven't read this since I messed with it, so I'm gonna be reminding myself as we go through this. Kim, what is that gonna say? 2006 Towne Grafton Annual Report, 2018? What's that going to say?
Oh, we're gonna take it from 2007 and then 2018. Appendix table one. Remember, you wanted me to go from the seven.
You're right. I just wanted to verify. And then 2018. All right. Does anybody know when the Otter Creek study was done? What year? Just a year for reference is all I was asking.
It was Otter, let's see, the first one was, was it Otter Creek or Typhon? Otter Creek was in 1998 or 99? And then the latest one was 2003. So I can check those dates. Because Bill's got all the work, because there's still, that's surfacing, so.
I would like to add, um, just in the prior sentence. However, zoning in the village has been looked into but not adopted. I would like to add, however, zoning in the village has been looked into, most recently in 2005, 2006. There was a citizens committee that did a fair amount of work in 2005, 2006.
For zoning?
Was it? Yes.
I would look at some dates like that. It helps frame the story. It's a long term though, actually.
No, the planning commission was asked specifically to take that topic. It's kind of under research considerations.
In what year was that?
It was back when Bob, you, you out as a chair, so like 06.
Get it aligned.
Yeah. I'm curious on the zoning. Was that just a small committee on its own or was that the town like, a town governance committee? Because I don't remember anything to do.
Bob Crawford was a select board guy. Who was the guy that used to run the cheese factory? Anna was on it.
Anna would have been with Bob. Peter.
Peter Moon.
And how, I, was it on the... So, well, Harold definitely would have been.
I mean, this only says has been looked into, so it doesn't specify, was it the town or citizens committee? So I think it's.
As I put it, the sentence was kind of murky. The chap, this paragraph is murky and that's kind of why I highlighted it, so.
Yeah, I just want to make sure because I think we should leave it to the town government is actually the town plan, not so much outside small committees. That's what I was asking.
Are you saying not to add that information?
Oh, no, no, because there was Bob Crawford. It was all with the select board committee, yeah. That's why I wasn't sure who was on that.
And then that, that sentence right after the pink, I would say if, if that's changed to say with the topography and location of the village, expansion would be difficult. I think that sounds a little better.
Wait, that would...
Just change the word. Instead of with, say, given, wow. Does that make sense?
Sure.
And then, but the next sentence is really weird. There's however, with the designation of growth centers or cluster housing in the town boundaries could help achieve. That sentence has a serious problem.
This is the most recent version that we approved?
Can I ask you veteran board members? You will see this idea that we're promoting cluster housing throughout this town according to this document. And I was not aware that that's what we wanted, but, you know, to create new hamlets, new villages is almost the way it describes that. And here's one of the times you come across that cluster piece. It is in the state documents. But to me, that sounds more like expanding Chittenden County than Grafton kind of things, honestly. So what do you want to do with that paragraph, folks?
Chuck, is this the most recent version you have? I'm really confused because I just can't imagine we let something this awkward go through.
And I can go back and try to see when the last time you tackled land use. It's been a long while.
Again, I downloaded this directly from the Dropbox.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that he didn't have that most updated version.
Yeah, I hear you.
I, I had a feeling that it is and, and I think it's just one of those things where no eyes focused on that particular piece.
I think the sentence is rather awkward, but I believe it was probably put in here to try to echo some state or regional aspirations.
So you can fix it by, that last sentence, just by taking however with out of there and just starting out, the designation of growth centers could help achieve responsible growth.
I personally wouldn't be opposed to removing the entire sentence from the paragraph.
I think Eric's point is that we had it, we put it in there for a reason.
Yeah, I don't hold a reason, but it's weird that we're gonna start advocating this cluster model.
Well, and it had a lot to do with preserving the corridors for wildlife and not breaking up, you know, this, like where my house is right now, a five and a half acre, like that's no longer thought to be a good thing, as you know. So I think the idea was to try to preserve.
Prevent sprawl.
Yes.
And, and I, and I think what is the theme throughout the plan is the preservation of the rural character of Grafton. Of course, that comes up here and there and that is, I think, one of the guidelines that that the plan follows and should follow. So, um, I think with Valerie's suggested strikeouts, the sentence would make sense.
He doesn't tie you to anything. It's just encouraging a model of development that isn't just breaking up.
So with that, for English sake, could we take out the words however with and just have the last sentence be the designation of growth center?
That's what Valerie suggested.
All right, fine.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah. And then as I, as I was reading this, I was also thinking about the village center designation, but that comes up later. Of course, I was thinking it would belong here, but it does come up later because we do have need a paragraph about that.
So what about the designation? The designation of growth centers or cluster housing in the could help achieve responsible growth while maintaining Grafton's rural character?
That's what we want to finish.
Right, you want to take out the boundaries is what you're suggesting. Right, strike boundaries?
Yeah, so the designation of growth centers or cluster housing could help achieve responsible growth while maintaining Grafton's rural character.
Everybody got that? You agree with it?
Yes.
Any comments down at the bottom? This is just, it's a mapping thing. If you've got your maps. It says, look at the land use map and my comments are, we don't have a land use map. Other maps. So I assume what we're gonna be talking about here is the proposed use map. Is that accurate in?
I want to see what you're saying, yeah.
And that's where you would want probably a hyperlink as well, right?
It'd be great if we had links like that and it's quick on you. If we're gonna be doing this electronic anyways.
Yeah, what they meant to say was proposed land use map.
And is it going to be in chapter 14 or is it gonna be in the appendix?
Chapter 14 is the maps chapter. When I did the edits on this, the first pink in this last paragraph, as you can see, is my highlighted. We need to compare these to the map labels because I didn't know whether the labels in the map were right and our text was wrong or vice versa. What it looks like is our text is correct because the text matches the Windham Regional Commission and therefore our map, specifically proposed land use map, at some point needs to have these four designations. And we need to come to agreement of what those different colors or sectors are gonna be. All right? And how about D6? Any thoughts on that one? Kind of D6, I'm sorry, down there is our last comment. Again, in front of the maps that we don't have, so I didn't know how to approach any of this stuff. I'm gonna ask Erica a question, but I want everybody to hear it because she, Erica, at least, has been involved, is more known. I need an explanation. I have a map called Resource Areas Land. Does the word resource there mean the same as resource here?
No.
I don't like that.
Yeah, don't blame you.
It's one of our major designations and we got titles using that elsewhere and it has a different meaning. We need to leave changing that title.
I think changing the title on that map is the most. I think changing the title on that map is most appropriate.
Okay. What would you get? Any recommendations for land values?
What's the legend? What does it indicate?
Sand and gravel, scenic views, scenic road, farmland, water. It's titled resource land. And then there's another one after this. Resource, water, and wildlife. Thoughts from anyone?
Natural assets, perhaps.
Does it come back to the air resources?
Yeah, how do we come back to the resource land, is the definition that we've already adopted, so.
We have the definition over in page three, resource lands.
And there's the confusion, that's it. Our definition of resource land are those so pristine, we don't want to touch it. And the map of resources shows things like gravel pits.
Right.
We want them to touch.
Right, so you call it gravel pit, something else. It is a resource.
What do you want to call it?
Gravel pit.
Gravel pits and water and. Well, I, we can dwell on this for 25 minutes and not solve it. I'm going to put a big circle there and say that's one of our homework assignments, is the last item on this first page says the maps that show physical limitations in development and resource areas, that's not a map that we've got, and we've got to either have a map or get rid of that sentence, and I'll play with it elsewhere in the territory. I guess what I'd like to do is go through as a group today, this, and then the first thing next meeting, with edits, put it together and have a proposal to accept it as edited means, and we'll have the next two weeks to make those corrections. All right? If that's the case, I'd like to flip over to page two and see what we got there that needs to be done with. All of my comments, they're all around that same thing, and a lot, I think, have been answered through reading the Wyndham's regional plan, but again, it's that same thing, we need to have a map that shows what is the productive rural lands. If you notice, comment D eight, that's a massive cut and paste from the Wyndham Regional Commission, and those are their land use area titles in the beginning of the chapter. I don't think we want to go near those, because later on, they start using terminology more similar to what we've been using, meaning productive rural, et cetera. So I guess I personally say that comment D eight is just confusing, get rid of it.
Yes, and also commuting distance is like a very subjective phrase. I will, how do they come up with that?
Kind of D seven and D nine are saying the same things. Again, we need a map. Wildlife habitat falls under productive rural lands? That one just crossed me off guard. Does that belong there? That seems like it'd be more resource.
Yeah.
If it's a wildlife habitat, is it a productive?
Well, some people would argue that's producing deer meat, I suppose. So, I don't know.
Well, that kind of broadened our definition of productive, and I will summarize it my way, but saying if you've got your 12 acres, but if you take your 12 acres and do nothing to it except that neither pristine, that adds value to graphic, and therefore it is productive to the economy. Stretching it maybe, but by conserving it, that's part of the productivity model, because of our tree lines. That's their definition in the big book, so. What do you say, folks? Anything you want to change there or out there, or what do you say?
Well, I agree, leaving out eight, for sure.
Okay. Seven and nine, we're going to create that map, so that takes care of those. Wildlife habitats, I think, go to this one.
Maybe we should just go back to Wyndham Regional if that was a question, and ask them, so we can be consistent.
It, it seems like they should be carve-outs within the proposed land use map.
Wyndham Regional, productive rural lands are low density and very low density residential areas containing land-based resources that, when in productive use, contribute to the region's working landscape and have significant economic value. These productive resources include forest lands, active agricultural lands, sand, gravel, mineral deposits, and high-value forests and agricultural soils. Productive rural lands contribute significantly to rural areas by providing open space and land suitable for rural occupations and lifestyles. Another paragraph, we're so beyond that. It does not mention wildlife in there that I saw, though.
What would you consider farmland, wildland? Would that still be considered wildlife under agricultural, which would be under water, and.
But I think it would fall under agricultural.
It goes, yeah, what I'm saying is it goes under agricultural, which would then go under. As it is productive, it is.
Oh, sure.
Working farm in the agricultural.
Yeah, I think the only thing being questioned is whether the wildlife part falls under that.
Well, I, I think it makes sense because of the, basically of the hunting aspect.
Trapping, hunting, fishing.
Which also contributes to tourism, I will say.
Which contributes to the economy.
Again, I don't have a problem with it. I don't like talking about it in some kind of higher red flag and.
Let's leave it.
Leave it in?
Yeah, I, I think that the wildlife areas can be carve-outs within, for that rural land, for that, within that proposed land use map.
True.
All right.
So then, on this page, we have the village center designation paragraph, and I know from your notes that John Bennett thought that that needed more language or something. He, he had made a comment that it needed something.
He did, and I didn't do anything with that, so I.
What more does it need?
I mean, read direct with John, because I read the village piece, and I read that, and I just, that's what it said, and you guys cut and pasted that in, so.
Yeah.
Is John the best one to find out more about this village designation benchmark? I mean, is he the one that sets that in terms of yes, you get it, or no, you don't?
No, it's the state.
It's the state.
It's the state, yeah. It's the state department. I think it's the Department of Colors and Community Development.
And if you were to talk to one particular person down there, probably would be Susan McMahon.
But if I start with John and ask him, does it meet the criterion to get the village designation, he would be able to answer that definitively?
Probably so. All right, he's very helpful.
He's my new pal, so we should keep talking to him. McMahon, just from my database.
Yeah, I mean, John's the chief planner overall.
Right.
So.
Again, he's been very receptive in community, every time I've gotten hold of him.
I mean, we can certainly create more language here if, if it's required, but I, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
What's required.
Is that true that rural residential is located generally near existing village centers?
Well, what does near mean? Is near 300 feet or three miles?
Just looking at a map of the dwelling, it seems like they're sparsely throughout the town, not more dense as you get closer to town, or less populated as you get farther away. Again, no problem leaving it in, I just read it and wasn't sure if it's along with it. Thoughts, questions?
I think the goal was, again, to prevent disruption of corridors, and so have development occurring not in the way, way, way rural areas.
That cluster mentality, you can type smaller populations. You know, that said, and it's my random nature, looking at these maps a long time, there is an increased density on Eastern Road, and it seems like on Anderson Road, that I was never aware of, almost to the point that they're mini hamlets based on their definitions. And I don't know, I was really intrigued with Eastern Road, because we talked about growth, that's a growth street, because it's quick access to one of three in the real world, and, you know, if people start subinviting, I can see that as being one of the places someday that could become something, whatever that something might be, so.
I would add a word here in that last sentence, small general stores.
Yeah.
And home-based businesses operated by the homeowners servicing townspeople and tourists.
Ah, good.
We don't just serve tourists. I'm thinking of Carol's shop in Houghtonville that doesn't serve tourists, but serves townspeople, right?
Near, here. Yes, very good.
That's the kind of a business that we want to encourage, small home-based businesses that add to the local economy.
Agree completely. All right. All right, so I'll play around with that, and then we'll get, we'll bring it back the next meeting, and we'll see what we can do with that. Page three.
Your question 20, I think the answer is, the select board is not considering a water supply. I think they are only considering.
You're on page. Skip forward.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh. Oh, 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 yeah, I must have.
So DC four, that is.
This may, may, from the regional perspective, large municipalities that have water and sewer and that type of.
You guys want to switch one?
No, well, I was on the wrong page, so let's go back to the page.
Okay, we'll get back to that one after we get to that page. So we're on the third page, starting with comment D 14, ending with D 18.
Yeah.
We're all on the same page? All right.
In the larger municipalities, I think the existing infrastructure is going to water and sewer that, that we don't have anywhere.
So does that sentence belong in there?
So for us, roads are basically our infrastructure, and maybe power lines, which is not our control, though. Road is kind of all control.
Right, some people might want to have independent power, anyway, so I wonder if we change this and said it should, to be, should be encouraged.
I'm sorry, where are you?
The comment 14 at the top of page three.
Oh.
So could everybody live with that, if we just said it should be encouraged, rather?
I'll tell you what, I can wordsmith that in, because we've done that 20 minutes wordsmithing, but that should be encouraged, instead of.
Yes, I just want to make sure.
Should only occur.
Okay with the concept.
I have a suspicion that that was added to support subdivision regulations such that if one were to propose a subdivision, that you would be able to supply it with power, road structure, fire, and rescue support, those sorts of things. That would be the infrastructure that would be needed to support the future use as a subdivision. Take your Anderson Road, for instance, if you put in 100 unit development out there, subdivision, it would strain our capability to provide fire protection, for instance, without infrastructure such as fire ponds.
So what's the process in that? I mean, the select board say, no, you can't do it unless you do, like you're saying, fire ponds and give us another 300,000 bucks for another truck, and whatever you need kind of stuff, or do they have that power, I guess, to do that?
Well, they have some power. When you have a big development, you fall under Act 250, which.
It's 250.
Then gives you, through that 250, some leverage with regard to things like that. But a subdivision has to fall, a subdivision regulation has to fall back on supporting language in the town plan, and I think that's the direction of that particular statement was put in there for.
I think I do remember some discussion, like having to get, we had to get a school bus up there, and then there had to be turnaround areas.
Yeah.
Same for fire.
See, and I didn't think infrastructure is this bigger thing, I was thinking, you know, plumbing lines and all that, that's a weird sentence, but now you think fire department, buses, and other stuff, plowing and so forth, and I guess it doesn't. I'd almost lean towards leaving it as strong as it is, it should only occur where, because you don't want 100 unit coming in, and we're going to have a fire capacity.
Low-income housing, just because there's not something there now.
Very true. You really need to speak to what the development has to provide in order to come to that level.
So I think both of those things, putting them in the plan, and then also specifying as for instance, adequate.
An Act 250 would pick up all that, probably.
So we're going to say it went away. You still want to have a town plan that says, oh, you have to have adequate.
Yeah, so that in the plan.
So having it in the town plan supports our subdivision regulation, which then also has some meaning before the Act of 50, folks.
I guess I'd lean towards if it's okay with the group, I, I can go back and wordsmith on our own that sentence and come back for the next meeting. I think what I'm hearing is, you know, we don't want people building to stress our resources, infrastructure, municipal services, et cetera. We are not opposed to growth, but it needs to have either the existing infrastructure or planned infrastructure to support those kinds of things.
Yep.
Yes.
This kind of will.
Right, not just confining us.
All right.
Yeah.
I can play with that. I deleted, and I'm concerned, because it doesn't show my delete, the 2,500-foot comment, just because we do not have any hills higher than 2,500 feet. I thought we deleted that before, but it was. And then you have this sentence, this paragraph about Turner Hill, which I'm not opposed to, but it just seemed kind of like, bam, throw it in there. Is that the only one you want to talk about there? It's kind of a, you know, we've got to figure out what resource lands are. It goes to Eric's comment, what we've got described here is Turner will be resource. Wyndham Regional has over half of our town identified as resource.
Well, this is actually in conservation, I believe, the Turner Hill parcel.
It is, and it's, I think it's one of the only ones that we do have.
Are there others?
I feel it's really important.
Well, we have other conservation areas.
But not as protected.
Did not what?
Not recorded and protected like this one here is. The other one about the state? We've got a state forest, but it's a state forest, it's still not, they didn't have any bindings in the state forest like they did in the Turner Hill, and that's pretty much why they did this one, because there are there.
But I guess I'm not saying take it out, I'm asking, is that the only one we want to point out in this section? Are there others?
Well, I think it showed up there because it was new after the previous town plan was written.
Okay.
Because it was set up in the meantime, so it was something special that people felt should be mentioned.
Are there others that they want us to mention, or it can stand as it is, I'm not opposed, but just, it would seem odd, but just kind of that got thrown in there, and again...
You could put in a lead-in sentence, just says, since the last town plan, blah, blah, blah.
A major addition has been put in there.
Yes.
Then it would have more context of why it's in there, that's a good point there.
We can add several of these other things that are in the paragraph above, things like the wildlife habitat, the endangered species, fragil areas, perhaps, but those are identifiable from the state's ANR resource map. They appear, sometimes not a lot of explanation, but they do appear.
As in deer habitat and that kind of stuff?
Deer habitat is there, deer habitat is a lot more transient than some of the other things, but, you know, the deer habitat really needs to be verified every few years because the actual forest changes, they move around, and so something that was deer habitat 20 years ago was not necessarily deer habitat the same way today.
So Eric, are you proposing that we ask Chuck to put those together, or Wyndham Regional? Like, how would that happen?
I don't know why Wyndham Regional should necessarily get involved, something that we should be able to...
Point out changes in deer habitat?
Well, that requires on the ground boots from biologists. I don't think we're trying to do that, so we go with what we've got. But there are certainly identifiable and mapped already from the state level, endangered species and other such locations on map that we can put on ours.
Yeah, those are all in BioFinder, that's what you were talking about earlier.
And so I'm looking at one of two resource areas, again, strange terminology, this one's called Water and Wildlife, and in the old maps, it had defined plant, state threatened or endangered, plant rare, nature, natural communities rare. So are those the areas that you're talking about, and are identified in there? There's also deer wintering, but again, this is 2008, that's 10 years ago.
Yeah, that's...
Close enough, or not close enough?
Well, probably have to go with it, unless we want to actually have somebody do some research.
Not on our budget.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was getting at.
But someone wanting to do development, for instance, and something that we've mapped as deer wintering area, could certainly pay for a biological study to find out whether it indeed still fell under that kind of a category.
So where did they get their data, you think?
I don't know. Now, that is a good question for John, but he would...
Because if that's not dated, then... Well, it's taken from this, I keep running into it throughout these maps, VGIS, a lot of this data came from BGIS layer, and then they defined the layer, and if you look at the table of contents for maps, it hasn't been there, but there is a layer in this VGIS map that I did not find, which comes from the Vermont ANR.
Vermont Geographic Information System.
That's what you, BGIS is, okay. Is that an online map you can access?
Well, it's been superseded by the resource map, the ANR resource map, so it's all included, one layer or another. It is an all-inclusive kind of map.
My brain's starting to hurt. So I asked the question, and I'll repeat it, I don't have a problem with leaving Turner Hill in, and I think your suggestion of recently added, putting that kind of text, we bring it in. Are there other areas that you'd like to specifically define in this section that are so pristine, so special, that those kinds of things?
Is there any skips?
Yes. Yeah, yeah. And that's, a lot of that is in the Natural Resources section, and a lot of it has to do with the Western Hills and the rivers, the pristine rivers, the Wellingham and Styles Brooks, and so that probably should be here.
Could you just cross-reference and just say C. Chapter, blah, 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 page?
Because there is discussion.
Right, that too, but also some of it's in the actual plan, I think.
See Appendix 4 for more detail on some of the pristine ones?
Well, no, no, not in Appendix, in the Natural Resources Chapter, because we're right now, this is Land Use Chapter. So there's more discussion, I think, answering your question, yes, there are more areas like that, but they are more specifically described in the, but perhaps...
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Perhaps, there needs to be at least a reference here.
So it might be at some point, I'll look at that chapter and say, refer to Land Use Chapter, page 29, for more resource areas, kind of thing. I have no clue what D. 17 is talking about. It's almost like it came from somewhere else.
Like notes, maybe, from your meeting with Wyndham Regional?
Could have been, but I remember writing about that somewhere. Let's see if I can find it.
Why would number one under policy not be a policy? To me, that sounds like a policy. It's similar to number two, things that have to be taken into consideration. Because we don't have so...
I guess the reason, it was my opinion, is the idea of taking something into consideration is not a strong enough statement to be a policy.
So...
It's not a correct, and it's not a...
So is it a goal?
The choice is to think about moving it, or to think about rewriting it to make it a type of policy. The reason I didn't rewrite it is because I think I tried and couldn't figure out how to do it.
Fair enough. So stronger language.
Because, again, a policy to me is as close to black and white as you can get, in taking something into consideration.
It's kind of wishy-washy, yeah.
Yeah, we thought about it next, so...
If you just got rid of must be taken into consideration, and so must be addressed, I think if we want to make a policy, you have to make a must.
If you want to keep a policy, right, yeah.
I still like the idea of a full map.
So we'll play around with those words between now, and we're about out of time, but let's finish this up if we could, and then we'll edit, we'll send it out for approval for the next meeting.
But you'll have to have some comments.
I'll be late. I'll come when we have accounted for those. And I'm sure it'll still be going.
I edited seven there for DC 19, I didn't change the meaning very much, I don't think I changed it all, but that was right from the Act 251 piece, so I stuck that in there.
Okay, so now here, now we are at 20.
This is a personal question, I didn't know what was going on there, so go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, so I think the answer is that only wastewater is being thought about.
No, well, they recommended, when Otter Creek did come give the presentation last month, they did recommend to grow water rather than wastewater, but it's up to the town, and so they're kicking around both.
So should we echo that in this, rather than saying wastewater?
Yeah, they're investigating both of them, and the cost and all that, and the maintenance.
All right, that's why it was in there. See, D. 21, it was a policy, but it has encourage in there, so I moved it to a recommendation, my fault on that.
Under recommendations for action number five, it shouldn't be examines.
Yeah?
And I'm not quite sure what that means, examine lands adjacent, update the towns maps, well, that makes sense. Yeah, I guess, yeah, examine lands, pay attention to...
That was a recent addition, just because of the flood issues and trying to more specifically examine those lands adjacent to...
Is it redundant, or does it conflict with anything in the flood resilience chapter, I wonder?
We wanted redundancy.
Okay, and there's no conflict between this and anything you said in that chapter that you're aware of?
Yeah, those are the kinds of things that you should say over and over again in your plan.
Number eight, it was kind of the same thing, it was, seemed more like a recommendation than a policy, so I moved it over there. It's 8:35, folks, what's your pleasure?
I'm going to go down with an item.
Same wise I am. I guess I'd like to recommend that I take, we worked with Chuck, come up with a document we send out, and get for an approval of all changes as one, and again, I'll do the best I can with it, and then we'll make some minor changes if I don't get it, and we'll knock this one off and call it good. I have some notes of things to look into, and we'll get a hold of John Bennett about a couple of minor questions, and I'll give you feedback on that as soon as I can get something.
Which is terrific, but I'm concerned about when school starts again, that all of this shouldn't keep falling on you, so I think we could do what we did before, to divide up the chapters a little bit, and, you know, give other people back some of the work. I don't have any interest in any more work, don't get me wrong, I appreciate you doing it, but I feel like a lot is falling on you right this minute.
And right now, because again, my schedule is so flexible, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah.
If the rate we're going, it's a lot of little stuff, but I think it was the biggest, hardest, most confusing stuff tonight. You can see it, the appendix got to be cleaned up, the maps got to be cleaned up, all that kind of stuff. Other than natural resources, the rest of the chapters don't have a lot of concerns or comments. Natural resources is much like land, it's, the maps don't line up, and it's a lot of redundant stuff. I'll be honest, the one biggest hurdle I see that we need to come to consensus with, and I'll put it bluntly, my goal is to have consensus, but if we don't, it's going to have to be a three to four vote, or a four to three vote, or whatever, is, we need a map that shows the four areas, what is a resource area, what is a productive rural, et cetera, and whatever we come up with, we need to get that piece done so all of this ties together.
So are you envisioning doing that next time, or the time after?
Time and time after, probably, or a little...
Oh, yeah, remember, I promise, we will not do anything. I don't want to lose this conversation.
Schedule, I would not do special meetings.
I sent out that list way back when, we talked about the last meeting, my plan is to announce another special meeting at the end of the next regular meeting, which according to this is August 14th, and then a tentative special meeting, I don't have down, oh, August 28th is what we talked about, for a special meeting to convene the same process, well, by regular meeting September 11th. Next meeting is a reminder, we have a minor subdivision hearing. Any homework, Chuck, that we need to do for that, to show, prepare it, or?
No, I, we're pretty much set for that, you have a packet from last month.
There was one minor change, a road name, or something?
Yeah, but we had a, like, a draft decision, everything, so...
Are you doing a site visit?
Not for minor, unless you want to.
Could, and...
Yeah, you definitely could.
I was asking if we were going to...
I had a planned one.
So are we agreed on the special meeting on the 28th?
I believe so.
Okay, just done it.
We'll make it official, official at the next one, check your calendars, but the goal is to keep doing this until we get it done, and, I mean, at this rate, I would love to say that, I don't want to put it on a camera and everybody's going to spit the word, you know, the September meeting will be the one where we say we're done, done, and we're ready to pass it on, that's kind of my calendar. I just said that out loud in the room, it was flying out. I would entertain a motion for adjournment then.
So...
Ooh.
Second.
Favor.
My.
Adjourn.